Get back. Oh, I suppose it should get going. All right. Um. It is nine oh thirty and are we? Yes, we're recording. I'll bring the uh. Meeting, uh, select board to order. Um, this is a meeting for the annual select board forum. So, roll call of those in attendance. John Rounds?
Yes, here.
Ryan Thawlessy?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Uh, well, please, yes.
Kathy Gwada?
Yes.
And Debbie Jakes here. All right. So. My apologies for being slow to get here.
This meeting is being recorded twice?
Thank you. Okay. We've had some input regarding priorities from people. Or that what they believe should be select board priorities. Some days, it just doesn't work. Okay, okay. Greg, do you want to?
Pick us off?
Yes, please.
Okay. But I think it'd be helpful, um, to pick up three different buckets that we want to focus on. One is talking about how the board functions as a board, how you feel things are organized, how you feel genes are running. What's working well from a procedural perspective, but could benefit from some improvement. I think that's my line to the part one, a lot of time to go this morning. Part two, I think, is sort of an assessment of current state of affairs. What, whether it's the town financially, operationally, communally, or politics. So, current state of affairs. And then the third part, we recommend we take a deeper dive into what you feel are our priorities, what we feel are some of the more strategic things we should be working on, both short term and long term. And how we can position ourselves to accomplish some of those key goals that we've been doing. So that's my sense of the morning. Obviously, you can pick up where you would like. But that, I think, is a decent road path to follow. As you said, we did receive a few emails about different priorities that residents would recommend. And there's also a survey, soft survey at the chamber provided. And highlights there include the top three and parking, community events, and restaurants. Both to the top of that survey, that's the top three priorities. So, the business community thought was important. So, with that, I would kick it back to all of you and see who would like to start on the process of making our overall function.
And before we do, Kathy did ask for the white board.
It's right there.
Yes, for, um.
I know, markers.
Visual.
Yes, right.
And I think that that's a good idea to.
Okay, so do we start by putting the three topics there, or do we just continue?
Honestly, I asked for it personally because sometimes I just need to write something. But it's not for my use only, so however the team would like to use it.
Also, I like that word, key.
The three things from the chamber were parking, something in restaurants, and I didn't get it.
Yeah, I got the progress.
Parking, events.
Events.
Yeah, we did events, so that, uh.
Sure.
I think that says I'm off season.
Yes, okay.
Events to drive more traffic.
But I had the opposite of the other people there.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we have a wide range. Some of the residential input, citizen input was, uh, so, uh, that is true. You can say, two states, no tourism.
I think it's important when we say two, I mean, some, we actually clarify that it's two from whom we.
To see what exactly the same letter.
Well, right. So one just. Right, exactly. So we had one person's ideas.
It seems covered too.
Well, then, another person took that.
It was very much of that, exactly.
Rebounded everything.
Right.
You know, I think we should be doing more to drive traffic.
Okay, well, let's, let's. I agree, but let's go kind of around, and you wanted to.
Well, we're starting with how this support work, I think, is working very collegially. More so than other boards. And that's. It's not necessarily reflected in our relationship with town, but, um, among ourselves, we seem to be doing reasonably well, and the meetings are real short.
Oh, you mean the past month's.
Yeah.
I only know one meeting, so you. Really, and I haven't completely.
On your month's sample, so I can speak to that now.
And they didn't use, it's periodically, but I would say since COVID started and some of the other topics fit, they definitely.
If we got out by ten thirty, it was a good night.
Yeah, they're always.
And it was not necessarily the case. A number of years ago, but that's different. I want to stay on it, but, but. Yes, so that's good to hear that we feel we function well as a group. As far as how the town's people, some of them, and I don't have an exact number, but bring to that one. But of course, our job is not, it's not a popularity contest. To do what needs to be done in the study educated best interest of the town.
The only, the concern that I would have, but I think is getting better, is that, and it goes to, I guess, the length of our meetings, is that we do get caught up in some issues. Frankly, we shouldn't get caught up. And we spend way too much time on a few things and not enough time on, we're going to spend forty million dollars this week. So, I think we have to, all of us, keep in mind at some point, and some of this, I won't call it minutia, but things that are. All right. Let's call the space minutia.
Operational details.
Yes, yes, that, either we shouldn't be in the middle of those decisions, somebody else should deal with it, or.
To that point, to that point, it's. So, last February, March, I called them, I zoomed in on me, okay? And there was an application by National Grid. Okay, to bring, to upgrade us out at Cal's. There's twenty minutes, I'll never get back. Okay? We have people in place to do their job. Okay, I think as a board, we have to trust these people to do their job. And rather than kick around the minutia, okay, as to what, how, and why, to say, okay, you've got the permit. Now just make sure that you align with the DPW and the police and make sure it works and move on. I mean, we're trying to do other people's jobs, I think, a lot of times, and that's, like I say, if you do that three times a night, and then you get to a meeting, there's an hour loss.
And in that's where policy procedure comes in, and so I get what you're saying. It does have to come before us.
Not say rogue scam.
Right. Because some things need to be reiterated, and it's not done because we're not trusting of DPW or whatever the police. Sometimes we just have to make sure National Grid hears what needs to be heard. But I agree, it does not, and those, to that point, you know, the select board's office and the town administrator's office, we have some overlaps, but Greg has the frustrations that we're talking about to the grid. I mean, he's dealing with things that are horrendous time sucks, and we all need to also help support Greg in, in how do we all minimize these train derailments that, how do we fix the train tracks, I guess, I don't know.
So, so Ben on the board, I would say, to follow up on what John and Brian had. I hundred percent agree with Anne's comment around, we are a diverse group, we have very different backgrounds, but I think we work very well together, I'm really happy about that. The policy work is incredibly important, I have that as another plus, because that's our, that's one of our core responsibilities, and that's an example of how we are focused on our core responsibilities. I also think that the preparation for the, our select board meetings, you know, Greg did a great job, I think, preparing us to walk into the room and make decisions. On the needs improvement side, I agree with John's point that I'd like to see us talk about more strategic issues, and that's a function of how we manage our time. And so, to what Ryan was getting at around, like, the National Grid example, maybe we need to think about setting expectations for when people present to us, what standard information are we looking for? Because a lot of the questions that we ask, they may be centered around risks, what are the risks with what's happening, or what opportunities can we take advantage of? But, you know, not necessarily today, but if we can start to think about, okay, if someone's going to present to us on a project, are there some key things that we usually want to see, like a timeline, outcomes, here are the risks? And then maybe other things that are unique to the project, but I think the more we set expectations, the faster the conversation might go.
And that's a really good point, because everybody's expectations are different. Right, and that's, that's, that's a really good point.
And I think just the last thing I have noted was really just overall clarifying of the roles and responsibilities that I think that goes along with the policies and procedures. This board is the integrator for whatever the town does, right? We kind of have this umbrella responsibility to kind of make sure the town is run well, and so do we need to, you know, take a fresh look at how the committees that we have spawned, you know, do they have clear goals? Do they know, you know, are they in line with what our strategy is, just kind of, we're the integrator, so how do we want to go about that part of our core responsibilities?
Good question. You mentioned Kathy, when people present to us. Now, different people are on the agenda all the time, I'm not counting National Grid, per se, and I think that reference to the National Grid reps that usually come up, and they can't answer any of them. Who, what, why, when, you know, oh, we'll get back to you, we'll get back.
Exactly.
Why don't you show up here? What are you going to hit with those? But independent of that, with various committees, are they, they just say, we want to meet, or we tell them, we'd like to hear what you're doing? Is there any kind of guidance that they get in terms of, hey, you're going to talk to us, we want to hear from you for about ten minutes, and we want to know at least A, B, C, and D, anything else you'd like to throw in, but here are the key things. I, Greg, do we ever, is it kind of? Each situation is different and.
Yeah, we sort of dealt about it case by case, and so on, case by case, we have done, you know, some of them, but in terms of structuring it more formally, I think it could be better.
Okay, I'm just wondering, maybe we can come up with some sort of, you're going to present before the board, here are pretty much generic questions we're going to ask. And a lot of them are W's, and although it's much common sense of it as it is, don't necessarily address that. And maybe we should just say, fine, and give them a list of key things that we'll want, that are kind of generic, that they can apply to whatever project we're talking about. Because I don't want to turn this into, okay, we're going to have a fifty or twenty minute advanced conversation. That's just not productive, you see. Largely, your time.
I think setting, setting down with boards and committees and coming to an agreement on goals and what projects they are working on, I think that's something we can do a bit in general.
All right, it doesn't, I don't think it happens that often with us, maybe every other meeting or so, we have some committee that or something, but it happens often enough that they should be.
Well, that's also why we have the liaisons and the liaison report, is sort of, but it doesn't cover what you're getting at.
But it could.
It could, possibly.
And that's, that might be a better angle, because later on in our discussion, we've really got to get on liaisons, there are thirty committees here, they got to get divided up so we know the stories, when somebody's there. Whoever that liaison person is, should be in touch with that person. Before you show up here, I can tell you, this is what the board needs.
There are a lot of boards that we really help meet.
No.
I agree, I agree, there are only probably a dozen that we need to.
Maybe even fewer than that. That, I don't know. Welcome to Manchester, for example, seems to be doing my job. You know, maybe, but we don't need.
So I like the lack of anecdotes, I think it's just, you know, we have a lot of energy and a lot of great volunteers, but.
We have the boards, we should be following.
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of thinking about this last night, the language we use too, right? There are, could be helpful in setting expectations. So there are boards that make decisions, right? You know, you got the planning board, blah, blah, blah. Then there are committees that we spawn, and some of them may be for an ongoing purpose to support the town. And then you have these task forces, like that water task force, that is a project team that has a defined end date, they've got an ending. And we want them to disband at that point in the anniversary committee, but it's not that same, uh, network. So, three seventy threats, right? So, if we take a look and make sure we have clear categories and name the boards according to their life cycle, if you will, that might be one thing that could be helpful, and then to Anne's point, those ongoing committees, is it time to take a fresh look and see which ones are going to help us move forward and achieve our strategies and goals for the future? Because the committees serve a purpose, and it should help us move things along.
Right.
And so I agree.
And so, let's not move off that yet, since that's functionality. How do we best get that started, get that ball rolling? Is that something that I talked to Debbie about? How do we do, how would we?
What are you trying?
Trying to get.
So evaluating the committees and.
In the list of all the board's committees, and if they're online, I don't know, but I mean, in terms of, and they were born out of a need at one time.
And Jeff was trying to chase down all of the charters, and that kind of got dropped.
So I have a suggestion, we had to go through this exact same exercise, and I think it is incumbent upon them to come to us and demonstrate the goals they're going to have for the year, what they expect to achieve, and how that's going to help us move forward with our master plan or strategy, however you want to phrase it, but they should be coming to us. And then we can review, I mean, they don't have to come to a meeting, right? They can just submit it, right? Here's our goals for the year, new fiscal year, here are our goals, and then we deliberate and review, okay, we see some overlap here, okay? And maybe these two could be combined, or maybe, you know, those goals are good goals, but that work can wait for another year. So maybe we put that one on pause, you know, so we can deliberate and make decisions if we have the information available. And I would suggest that any committee that can't do that within a couple of meetings, probably should be put on pause to.
The treasuring committee, one, hasn't been in years.
I'm sorry?
The treasuring committee, you might have.
And that's a good candidate.
Hasn't been in three years.
But I would just recommend, we put it on them to come to us and say, why, you know, what are you doing? How are you going to help, and if not, we change it for them.
No, I'm not a big fan of later bureaucracy, okay? But in some instances, there are some committees, like in pedestrian, should we just like answer to, should they direct the moment, they answer the right moment? Okay?
Well, just public safety, there's a lot of layers to that.
But downtown improvement, that's.
Those may be decisions that we make, I just want to be respectful of the volunteers.
No, no, I'm.
Or giving them, give them a chance to have their say.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Perhaps, rather than the minutia of being, having a black figure in every pot, respect that there are other committees that are chartered with these items, and.
If they are chartered.
Oh, okay, that's, you know, that's, we're talking generalities at this point, actually.
Or we could have the town, you know, I think, I guess my point is, let's have the committees have their say. And to your point, Ryan, maybe it's not us who does the initial review, maybe it's Greg or his team that does the initial review, that's an excellent point, right? And then Greg brings to us a set of recommendations and rationale for why these committees should be closed and put on pause. Maybe that's another option, I don't know.
We started this meeting by saying that Greg was overproofing the minutia, which is.
Well, no, but that's, 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 you're about to saying, okay, let's figure how we get this done, so not necessarily.
If we all want to take it on, somebody else to do it. You know, but I'm just suggesting that we let the committees have their say, and some process to evaluate fairly and disband them.
If it came to that, I have lots of time to read it, Greg, so, you know, if you want, if, you know, if the decision comes around, I would be glad to be, and feedback. I hate to give it to Debbie, even though she's been an advocate for it.
Yeah, although she also comes, would be coming at it from the perspective of having worked out of town in administrative assistant capacity for some time, a lot of hours, so she'd be coming to it with an eye of also understanding.
So could Anne take the lead, though, and consult with Debbie to get it outside of perspective?
Either way, yes.
Great, yay, now let's.
Chief effort.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I also. I tend to get in touch with each of the committees and ask them for this. Let's, within the next.
Let's just read, let's clearly state what it is we're asking, though, from.
And, and, and give them the due date, if they have a phone.
I will, I will certainly find out to the board before I send it to them, and I will send the same thing to every board, us. And they can, they can send their replies back to Debbie, who can be organizing, keep track of things, and I will get that.
It is good, because it does seem kind of sometimes keystone cowish, you know, in and out of what's, who's in the car is not, we look. So, it's going to be the goals of any given fiscal year, purpose of that, purpose or function of that board or committee, and some we have to be very cautious in terms of
Not to get on their. Right, what is this word that they use?
Coach.
Well. They felt a lot on the way to your coach.
I'll tell you, so also perhaps clarity, if some of these committees don't report to the select, do any of these committees report to, like, the planning board, or is it, every committee that's on the website reports to us in some way, shape, or form? Is that true, or?
That's what I'm trying to get away from, so that's.
Right.
I think that's correct, and they're reporting.
Okay, I didn't know if there are any other boards involved in this.
Well, we're discussing, sorry. For the welcoming committee, they don't necessarily report to the select board, but they are under the guidance of it.
Right, you appoint them, any board, any of your point, you ultimately have responsibility.
Right.
You know, that, that doesn't require a lot of time and attention on your point, but an annual update from them is probably appropriate.
And it used to be done by mothers' clubs and whatever, but, and that, I think, is important to have clear, as you say, what, what is their function? And what are their goals?
What's the target, what's the goals, and what are the expectations, if we have any? Personally, I think it would be interesting to get the thoughts on who from the town hall they need support from, interact with. We have, like, ten committees all going to this one town employee for support, that's an issue.
And this is so, it seems so obvious and simple, and it's, well, no, but I mean, and we've gotten away from it. And we're, we are, you know, as has been said, dealing with spending an inordinate amount of time on things in which we shouldn't have to. All right, good, so Anne's on that, and. Okay.
So are there other items that could help you do your job better, easier? From a meeting perspective, or otherwise?
I do want to get back to, we talked about, you know, being accessible on a less formal basis, and Brian's out walking the drawl out in town. Is that what? Go ahead. No, and I was going to say, I really would like to, and not everybody has to do this, but I think it's a good idea for somebody from the select board to be available in town hall for hour two a week.
Twenty hours.
Yeah, yeah, and just so people can come in, and I'm, especially with what's happened recently in terms of how some staff and volunteers have been treated, and it's unacceptable. I did reach out to the AG's office, and I ended up speaking with representative, one of our reps, and it's, it's very, it's within all of our rights to say, nobody gets paid enough to be abused. But what am I, and either verbally or psychologically, and, yes, I'm being a little vague right now, however, it was my thought that perhaps if one of us is in town hall, at some point, people feel they can come in and express their gratitude, frustrations, whatever, but be there to let somebody have a face-to-face exchange of what they've got going on.
Perhaps. Town Hall is pretty carpeted, finding a place where you can sit. Maybe we could use the spirit of the back room in Seaside One, perhaps.
That's a great idea, that's a great, because it does need to have privacy for people. You know, my initial thought was, I'll go sit right down in the entry in town hall, however, it's. That's just it, it's, they need to have privacy, that's a great idea, Anne.
We had a month or two ago, I guess I had brought up the idea of, you know, Saturday a month or something in front of the post office.
Yep.
I'm just concerned that you can say you got hours here, nobody's going to show up.
It's, you know, it's.
And because they have to take that initiative, they have to be there, and.
And there has to be a sign.
And maybe you know the people who will show up, that they hear from anywhere.
But that's okay.
That's okay, but you'd like to get as broad a selection as possible, and if you're up where the people are, it's a better angle on that.
Or what if we, like, change the venue up? You know, we tried the post office one time. I could pick Mascanoma or something.
I just think something like, you know, um, Lucy's desk on in Peanuts.
Yeah, exactly. Yes. I don't charge five cents either.
Right, right. But I think with, with, with coffee, you know, and just do it for an hour and a half, two hours on.
I recall a conversation, John, I think you already designed, you event just went.
I was a janitor.
No, but.
I'll try to.
That's a nice idea too. I don't think they have to be one exclusive. I think we can vote because coming into Seaside One gives someone the, or, or wherever, or a small room, the, the janitor's closet, um, an opportunity to have conversation, open door or closed door. Is, is, and, and.
Variety of options is good.
Yeah. And, and we are, you know, it's, it's, I, I'm not saying you're not accessible. You know, I'm, I'm, you know, everywhere we go, we are.
Well, yeah, because we all know there are lots of groups that sell all kinds of tickets or doing something.
That's a great idea.
And they're in front of the post office and there's a reason they do this.
So just along those lines, if we're all in agreement that we should do this, do we want to have a little booth at Festival by the Sea?
Oh, I love that idea. That's great.
That might be, well, that's only a week away, but that might be a good.
You should, I mean, I'll be there with a rope.
And we can be in the beer garden.
I was gonna say.
Last year, last year, the board we set up next to that.
Yeah.
And.
But we have a little sign.
And the chamber, it's still in the chamber in fact, I'm sure there can be a woman that's promising it to the chamber. Okay.
That's not, John and I were, I was just.
Yeah.
Chatting with Ken third base.
You know, and, uh, and walking around. I mean, uh, I'm fortunate, uh, I'm up about all the time, all right? And you get more information sitting at the Legion with some people or, uh, they don't.
Some perspective.
Well, it's a perspective, no. And by the way, it's, it's, it's a perspective, it's the reality.
Yes, that's it. That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, you're here and you dress or you see all look into it. Okay.
Absolutely.
The, uh, I've been, the last two nights I've been sitting at the lobby, I've been in summer state for the last two nights. Okay. And you see people there.
Yeah.
All right. Festival, like I say, Festival by the Sea, they got a lot of people there.
Yeah.
And, uh, just walking back and forth to Christ.
You should.
It is out of bed.
Brian, I think we would all agree with that. Yeah. And I mean, I, it's, it's in, I deliberately go to the different restaurants and whatever in town and to be very visible and accessible and ask those. And I, I'm never short of suggestions and comments that are given to me, which is nice. Okay. We're, we're kind of Lucy, this, the, I'm okay with it, but is everybody okay with it?
Yeah, I think.
For me, formalized havoc talking right now.
With regard to this, you've got all these exposition places. And you just got a little stand that says, you know, select, select board is the thing we didn't do this six months ago. So it would say, select board, uh, you can think of something clever, select board is here or.
Ducking station.
Oh, ducking.
We gotta do a ducking.
An easy little.
With the heat, that would be nice.
An easy little standing thing so that, that's all you need. And it's so flexible, you set up anywhere.
Well, we have, um, like election signs that we could put some using those, put all the minor all.
I mean, if it's for this week, as we were trying to say, if we want to do Summer Festival by the Sea, I say whatever we can do, even if it's a big poster board, but mention progress, select board number, you know, whatever.
Okay. Who would like to be here at Festival by the Sea?
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
You won't be here.
We have not a chance.
We can just shift, I mean, I'm.
Yeah.
I would say, I would, I would, I'll be at the rotary and I'll, uh, downtown all day, so.
So maybe before we leave, we can just set times.
Yeah, set times. And I, I can chat with, I don't know, Debbie or somebody, you've got to get some sort of coffee. This is, this is stand. I think long-term, we just need something that is in, in your office or whatever. You just say, I'm gonna take this, I'm gonna go here, I'm gonna go there. And you just set it up and it's easily collapsible or whatever, these expositions.
Yeah, I mean.
Inventions have lots of these.
How about holding chair and a card table? Two holding chairs and a card. You know, and, and, and I have.
I have them too. Yeah.
But it'd be nice to have, I think.
A little package, we could just unpack when we need to.
The sign itself needs to just be something else. So, and I, you know, for Festival by the Sea, I, I think probably a total of four hours is enough.
No, we're not, there's, there's gonna be a lot of people coming into town, right?
Right.
A lot of people are trying on time, you know, try to avoid it at some point.
Which is okay.
Which is fine. They, they, the adventure is to, to drive business into town, not to, you know, time is holy.
So the question is, do we do this at Mascanoma? Do we do this here at town hall? Um, because the festival is all.
It's all town, yeah.
I, I, I think personally, move it away from town hall.
I, I, I still like to put front of the post office and connects because you've got the activity up here, you've got the activity of Mascanoma people.
I know that usually the chamber sets up right at the front of Mascanoma. The rotary is behind, towards the glass, it's behind where the, uh, air tent is. I think to, to give a more sense of informality, move it away from town hall.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that is good. Um, now Brian, who?
Mike's trouble.
Mike, we talked to Mike about that and that's, okay, easy peasy.
And after a while I can contact.
So, and maybe he would give us an idea of where there might be an opening spot. And that, that may be the.
I'll contact him tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm testing right now.
Sure.
And see.
Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Select board corner. Maybe that's what it all says.
Except for us in a corner.
Well, you know.
Well, then you give, give anybody ready ED at the end.
Corner.
Ann. Well, we could just, just say, you know, select board. Just it does not have the, you know, I mean, or do my younger grandchildren want to make a sign?
Chat with this one.
Yeah, just something simple, doesn't have to be, you know, super.
Come by and say hi. Or, you know, and I'm sure we could have Tiffany promoted on.
Absolutely.
Hey, you know, you want to talk with select board member in person? We'll be there.
Box of tomatoes provided.
Or leave your tomatoes at home.
Yeah, and then, you know, it'd be nice to say, you know, if you have, you know, just a handshake.
Yeah.
A, a, a thank you, uh, uh, something you would, maybe not a thank you if you don't want to. But, but it's, it's.
Your action is something a little bit larger, um, which has to do with how is the board working? Which is our, the way we deal in public with criticism. And we've been trying to clarify, and I think there are cases where we'd better not be saying, thank you very much. My dear concerns and move on rather than getting rebuttals.
That's your basic response to everything, isn't it? Emails come in, thank you.
How others in public.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Cause no, actually, my emails can be very long, just after I give the initial. Thank you.
By the way, mine's not ready, so thank you very much, I'll look into it, I'll thank you for your concern, whatever.
And then I go back. So, but, but, and, and yes, and because the biggest thing is for anybody in town to know that we've heard them. And we don't have to be going into depth or in-depth at that time.
Can't give away, when it's something controversial and contentious, you really want to explain and it just gets more and more.
Well, that's where we bring it and, and, you know, if, if we can maintain, and it's not always easy as we all know, but if, you know, we, we do set, we set the tenor of civility and either we, you know, it, it, it's, it's a top-down, in my opinion. And so, um, there's, we can strongly heatedly disagree with things, but civility still needs to be there. I mean, we all have, I hope we do anyway, dear friends with whom we are so opposite on some topics, but they're still friends, you know, and that's, it, it should be that way, I think, with townspeople as well. It's, it should never be something personal. Sometimes that's hard, but we might.
Does, we have, that's one of the policies, correspondence, which really comes from the chair, is that correct? I think. We not have a policy on that?
We do not have a policy.
We do not have a policy.
Oh, I guess that's about what I'll, that'll be a topic for another time perhaps.
Um, I disagree with the whole of the chair.
Yeah. That's why I, I brought this up because if it comes to all of the board, I suppose the chair replies a lot of times, it's.
Even, even if it comes to the whole board. And there was somebody who said something to the whole board recently and I read it and said, oh, you don't understand some of the details of what we did. And that was a useful correspondence and changed her mind at least about a few things. And I think relying on the chair, you're, if you're getting all of it and have to, you're just going.
It's a lot.
You have the same problem, Brian.
It is a lot. However, you need, you need one on first, one person on first base. And that's, that's, it's just how you have to have it. Otherwise, I think, but it doesn't mean that that one person.
I don't want you to delegate folks' letters to everybody.
No, I don't mean that.
I think if, if it's, if it's addressed to the whole board, I think anybody on the board should be, we should trust each other.
Absolutely.
I think that's true. I also think that, I know that this is one of the great discussion points for us today, the concept of assigning a point person to certain major projects from the board. It's a take on the liaison, or like, like Becky may, you know, asked me to be the point person for dispatch, right? So that's kind of like an executive sponsor. So if a board member is the executive sponsor of a particular project.
So I shouldn't have answered this person's question?
No, 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 I'm asking, I'm, I'm trying to have a conversation here. So, um, it's not just the chair who might feel compelled to respond, but if the email coming in is for a project for which an executive sponsor has been assigned.
In other words, you're the liaison.
Liaison, right. Is that, would we want to? I, I don't.
But to Ann's point, if someone asks you a question, Dan, you want to talk about, uh, a disconnect, okay? If you, if I ask Ann or someone asks you about a project, you have some information on it. It should be shared. Okay? So versus saying, well, I'll have, uh, the, the executive point person get that.
No, so what I'm getting at though is if, if, and we'll just use dispatch as an example. If, if I'm the point person on that, it is likely I may have more timely information than the rest of the board. So if someone else from the board responds, it may not be entirely accurate.
No, I think that's, yeah. This is a reasonable approach. It spreads the labor because most of the time it's coming to everybody. And I read it and I say, oh, I guess Becky's gonna get back with this person. I read it, I see it, I know what's going on, but I assume that you're gonna reply. But I think all of us are in that seat. We say, we assume you will reply. Now, in this instance, if it's a dispatch, yeah, we think Kathy will reply. Of course, when she replies, she replies to everybody and we'll see, oh, yeah.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay, so that's the end of it. So that, I think that's the assumptions we have to work on.
But I, I do think.
But that is the base conversation.
Well, but if we're talking communications, for example, emails, Ann's case that we're talking about right now, or situation, I, I think that, yeah, respond. However, every member of the board needs to know about that response. It's not a single, because you, when you answer that, you are representing the board. And so all the board needs to know what is being said on behalf of the board. And so not that it's to be deliberated. I mean, and that's, that's, in other words, we would not.
Reply off.
Exactly.
That's, that's the term, reply off.
But that's, and that's okay. But what we can't then do is start deliberating what the select board responds about.
Right.
So if that's something that wants to bring up further dialogue, that goes on an agenda. But we should all know what is, I, I, I think. If it's a letter that comes to the whole board, if it's not a letter that comes to the whole board, that's a little different story. We had this situation that occurred. Someone sent John a letter and it, it was sent to John. Or was that the whole?
Yeah, it was sent, no, it was sent to me.
Yeah.
Because of, because of my roles.
Yeah.
And they, they figured that I would be a, a good point person.
Right.
Because it also dealt with historic district issues, which were also, you know.
Or it was perceived historic, yeah. So, so in that case, you are well within, but I would, in that situation, the people under whom that would fall, Paul Orlando, Greg.
Yeah, and I copied you on the reply because in fact I knew that you were kind of in the middle of that. We should know anyway, but I didn't copy 50 people.
Which you don't need to do.
None.
So let me ask a protocol question. That's a really good example to follow.
And we need to write this down, by the way.
So if, if a citizen emails one of us about an issue that really should be the role of a county employee to handle.
Yep.
Is it better if we, if our response is, excellent question, I'm including, um, you know, Chuck Dam on this because he is responsible for this area, rather than us actually crafting a response, but we make the connection to the county employee who should respond. Because part of what I've noticed in Manchester since I've been here is that because it's such a small town and the people know us, they come to us, right? But in larger towns, that's not necessarily the case. They go to the town employees more frequently than the board.
And we don't oversee the, I mean, that's Greg's job.
That's right.
It's not our aim. And, and it's really, this is, this is where, you know, it's, it, it, when I say CC Gray and that, that's exactly it, it's the, the proper overseers. And that's, that's interesting though, with a small town, you're right, that with small towns, it's a lot more informal.
It is, it's a lot more informal and I, I never would have thought of contacting a select board member of the town. Just wouldn't cross my mind.
Yeah.
But right to the county manager or one of the departments, so.
So to this, with, with regarding communications with the select board members, how we handle emails or, or communications, um, we, not that we want to add more policies, but, um, I think that the way social media is being used nowadays, we do need to have.
Social media.
Yeah, we have to have one. And that, you know, how, how the communications are handled, such as CCing all the members.
BCC.
I don't think it has to be blind copy because, um, it's, it's, if somebody's posing a question.
Right. Sometimes they should, they, they, they should know that their, their correspondence that they address to me is being shared with other people.
Yes. So, so Ann, this should probably be on our policies.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm writing new policies.
I had a note somewhere, this is actually, you know, it's spoken about, this is months ago and I saw it scribbled on my index of policies. So I didn't know if a policy existed or if we're gonna talk about it, but it was in 2021. I have notes, we've got to deal with this in some way or spoken about it. But anyway, I think for another time, we need to put something together. Quotifies what we've just been speaking about.
Yeah, okay. And that's so, so, all right. Just wrote new policy. There we go. Darn. We do have to come back to policies.
But we've been eliminating quite a few, so.
Yes, well, Ann has done.
Yeah.
Yum, unfortunately, now that we don't have a coworker on that and you have gone now.
So.
Okay. So I'm going to just quickly bring us back to functionality. What I've got right now in terms of functionality, um, we're happy with how we work together. Yay. Um, and we want to. And we want to have, Anne's going to take the lead on getting committees and boards presenting to the select board. And you're going to tie that in with Debbie, circle in with Debbie on some of that. We're talking about meet and greet, out on the street, from the post office, or possibly seaside one. And I am happy to do that. Anybody else who wants to do it, but I, I think, I just think we should try that. Okay, so when we talk about that, I think that we can just come up with initial hours. Who, who, who books seaside one, Greg? Is that Diane or who does? Okay. Is everybody okay if I go ahead and get started on that? Okay, I'll find some time to sit down.
Is there Wi-Fi in seaside, seaside one?
I don't know.
I believe so. I know there is upstairs, but shit, shit's strong.
Well, there, you can also use the, I need, I need cell in the.
I'm sorry, I don't want to go near there.
Have memory?
No, I was like the Roman, and I walk out.
I'll find out about Wi-Fi in seaside one. Question, Wi-Fi, because that's pretty important. Doing that, that's, just because we do that and we have posted hours, that's nothing that has, I mean, that's not a formal recording situation. Okay, good.
It should, it, it should go in the cricket under the, under the select, the selectmen.
Yeah.
That there are these.
Eric writes for the selectmen, that's it.
So, Anne, we're going to work on seaside by the sea. You're going to talk to Mike.
I have a section of the mic now, and I'm sure I'll, I'll track you down.
Okay, and what we'll do is come, I mean, before we move on to another topic, put it again. There we go.
I'll make a sign.
Communication policy.
Yes, communications policy.
All range, not, not a problem. I'm just worried about, thinking about MBTS, select board desk, corner. Just don't want to have a sign that says select board.
Yeah.
It's not going to connect.
Yeah.
We have to say desk or corner or something, but.
And if anybody has witty, a witty system.
Well, this is what you want to do. You want to be, I want to have a witty, witty line.
Okay, well, well, we can all think. That's exactly, that's my, that's my last, that's all. Okay, so.
Coffee pour, you know, it's my favorite. Because I mean.
I mean, Tom has, he used to have his, I don't get it, coffee with the.
Yeah, I think he still does that.
He does, yeah.
You know, and by the way, when he does that, I would have a problem if you, if you want to go on, Tim and Double Team, they were the quality of the problem that, just again, more, more visibility.
Yep, Ben with the board, Eve with the board, no, okay. Okay, so we've got the meet and greet, seaside one, festival by the sea, communications, for example, the, the social media communications. Okay. Social media, that's. Brian is working on that.
No one marks your all those.
Yeah, you know, they're done checking. So now Anne is on two things. So this is Anne on the committee and board presentations. I'm going to look into seaside one, Brian's going to chat with Brian on mic. And then the social media communications for getting written guidelines. That's new policy. Did I go back to Anne?
That's in the overall policy.
John, is John a partner?
Yeah, that's correct. That's all in the policies part.
Right. There we go. Okay, I just want to make sure.
A policy on presentation of projects, for example, the national grid, what do we expect? If you would like to write a policy for that, that would be great. Okay, Kathy to write policy. Policy to basically provide expectations. Whatever we expect when you come to us to say we want to open the street for America.
But just for clarification on scope, we're not just talking about outsiders. We're talking about term employees or committees. But like presenting to the board, setting expectations.
Oh, you're right.
I thought our discussion was more gentle than the national grid example.
Well, when they come to full permit, they have a full permit.
Oh, yeah.
We're going to be real simple, but I think I can do something that's applicable to anybody. I'll just grab something that's, let me know.
Okay. So which one am I putting your name on?
Project, presentation, expectations.
Okay, so this is here. That's great. All right. Good, awesome. And then. So that, I think, covers us. Yep.
Uh, but this is kind of process issues?
Yes, that one, the project presentation.
Oh, yeah.
On process issues.
But not in the broader sense, the broader topic.
Okay, there's one, just one other thing, I'm going to note here. I'm a little, it may just be me being lost. I'm a little uncomfortable with the, you know, the right, trying to follow up our action item tracking from the board. I'm just more accustomed to more formal, or decision-making boards, you know, especially those that are elected. If there's an action that someone takes from a board meeting, usually that doesn't actually have a tracker or something. So we, we're clear that we follow up and make sure that actions get added in the tracker.
Let me just simply spread you to.
It would be, they're usually buried in the minutes.
Yep.
But I, I've often gone back to the minutes to try and find something, and it's, it's not easy.
Well, there's a large, there's a larger shoot here. We have a town master plan. And I would be interested to see how many of the items on that have been followed up.
So it's interesting that you mentioned that as a liaison to the planning board. So I had had a conversation with our town planner on that exact subject. Because due to the pandemic, the next step will stop. There was supposed to be an implementation plan. And that had been drafted, but it hasn't been updated since the pandemic. So I suggested to the town planner that that would be a good place to start. She went to one of the recent planning board meetings and asked permission to update that. And they asked her not to do that because they had more pressing issues of her time. Which they could, right. But so, but I, I, I agree with you that that's a next step. If, if there's too much on the town planners plate right now, that seemed to be the barrier to getting that done.
But she also works for Greg, so she has two separate roles.
Right.
And so she doesn't, she, that, that might be something that comes out of the other part.
Right, exactly right. But that, that was the barrier at the time.
And.
Okay, the actions of an implementation plan should not prohibit implementation.
A hundred percent agree. And as somebody who was new to this whole process, I simply need an updated.
Yeah.
What's already been done? A lot of good work has been done, and I'd just like to know what's done, you know? A very, I don't think it should take a long time.
No, and that's, that, that comes back to timelines of outcomes. Yeah, you know, these, and this is, this, we have to get that done. That has to be put into place. So how do we do that?
Is, is this part of our.
Functionality.
Process functionality?
Yeah. I mean, it is function. How do we function in terms of follow-through? And, and the, the action.
So I, I think there's two sort of things here. One is there's action item tracking. Because there could be a plethora of different types of actions.
Yeah.
For gives to people. And then there's the, how do you monitor progress against your strategy? The master plan is our town strategy, or one of them, but it seems to be the largest one. We have other strategies as well, Greg has educated one. But typically you would have a cycle, right? You would, you have your strategy, but then you revisit it at least annually to kind of see if there's any external factors that would, like a pandemic, which would cause some things to change.
Yeah, kind of did a little bit.
You know, and then you do revisit your strategy, and then you set your priorities, and then you set the financial plan, right? I, I think because of the pandemic, it seems like that strategic aspect of the board function got swamped. And it, it would be good for us to get back to taking a fresh look, you know, at that master plan, what's been done. Did the pandemic or other external factors cause the need to tweak some aspects of it?
Which is the answers, absolutely.
I would, I would be surprised if it didn't. But I, that's, to me, that's just part of good strategic planning and, which leads into good foundation plan.
Absolutely. And this is, this, I think, is the critical component to effective functionality. And it's, it's ensuring the follow-up.
Well, so, and it's also how we set the agendas, right? It's our time management. So for example, there are some topics we, I mean, they're probably discussed on a cyclical basis. Like we just discussed the water rates, right? That happens every year at the same time, or however often it does. We could consider some strategic topics be part of our cyclical calendar so we can make sure they get done and publish our count. There are certain things that we can set on the agendas right now because they're cyclical or strategic. And then that would take up hopefully the majority of our time. And then the minutia might have a little harder time sneaking in.
And that's interesting you say, like, last night I was thinking exactly that of what are, you know, we have certain things that have to be done annually, quarterly. And, and for example, you know, we have reviews of, of some people that come under the board. And so that's annual or quarterly. And those are things that should be written down, even, even to the point of the Fourth of July parade, securing the, the golf carts.
It doesn't change everything.
No, and that's, but that's, I didn't realize that behind me. So anybody who comes on board can see what the calendar is of the annual. And, and I don't know if that goes on in select board.
I have another question. This really is the, I think, part of the managing everything that goes on here. You've got 50, 60, 70 projects that are going on. Greg, I don't know how you manage them.
EWF.
Have, have you got a spreadsheet that you just kind of go down maybe every day or every couple of days? All right, what have I got? Yeah, but what are the hot buttons today? In other words, we have to have something along those lines follows up, or is you just.
The action.
Well, so it's a little bit different.
Okay. It's, it's a little bit different, but the process that we're dealing with is.
So, well, so let me, let me offer this perspective. So I used to run a project house, okay? So the, the action item, just to clarify the comment that I made previously, the action item tracker that I mentioned was just that action item tracking. You know, someone came to us to get a license approved and we couldn't do it because there was some follow-up need. You know, what's, they're going to come back to us, you know, just some sort of tracking of actions. Then there's project oversight.
For the board's proceedings.
For the board meetings, yes.
Decisions for board meetings.
Right, that's right.
That's what I was.
But that's, but that's fallen out of the project list to put there 50. But right now, the action items for projects one, seven, 15, 32, 41, those are the ones that are hot right now.
Right, so once again, my comment was around action item tracking for board meetings, okay? However, what you're getting to is how do you monitor, or what's the right level of monitoring for the board to do on these projects, right? And Greg as well. There is different types of collateral that can be, you know, summaries that can be prepared, project dashboards and stuff like that, that are real simple, one pages or whatever. And if that would be valuable for the board to see, or I, I'd be happy to, you know, pull out some stuff.
Yay, I was just.
To share, to share for your feedback. But there's a difference between meeting, action item tracking, board oversight.
So it took some sort of bigger topics.
Yeah.
You did start, probably did update, I think, yeah, obviously continually updated. Summary project list of the projects, of the bigger projects.
Well, and we've got, you know, the, we've got the project dashboard.
Yeah, so the project dashboard, I have looked at that.
Yeah.
It is a nice summary. It's not the status. It does not get updated with status, dates, timing, outcome, the things a board would want to understand, risks, et cetera.
Yeah.
So.
But we couldn't, we couldn't monitor to do that.
We could. And I, I actually was trying to poke around some other town websites to see if there were some goodies. I love to steal a good idea from somebody else. And so do any, if any of you have come across a town website that does that really well, that would be great. Otherwise, I'll, I'll throw some together. And I've been hucking around.
Yeah, I play on, I go on other ones also.
Great, good.
Yeah, yeah. I like that idea, Kathy. If you want to.
Sure.
Show you a good couple of things. For board and like that. I do want to come look quickly at how people feel. Do you like the way the meetings are run? Not timeline, but do, do you want, would you all like to see the meetings run? We can't get too, we can't be too informal because then you just don't get anything. But are there aspects to the way the meetings are run, other than over time, that we should change?
I treat it, yeah, I know. I mean, I, I understand that sometimes when we're running ahead of schedule, we have to stop because it's posted on the agenda, we're not going to touch this until.
Right.
And it was.
Well, that's me, I get to do other things. We jumped in, the county administrators report or. But I guess what I'm getting at is there are certain things we do as courtesy to the public. In other words, public comment on items not on the agenda. That's not a mandatory thing. It's, I do, I do too, but I didn't, but I wanted to ask everybody how you feel about that.
An absolute.
It's, it's critical, but I, I agree.
I don't have any, I think the meetings are well-run. I would say, however, some of the things we talked, talked about today, if we put some of them in practice.
Yes.
I believe that will take some burden off of Greg and the prep he does for us. Because my initial comments was the preparation for the meetings is, is excellent. But I feel that too much of that falls on Greg. If we set the right expectations for the people who are coming to the board and we hold them accountable, if they don't meet the expectations, we say, you know, thank you very much. We're going to ask you back. You cut the conversation off. And that takes the burden off of Greg. So he doesn't have to prepare all of that documentation in advance, you know? Yes, as, as ensure that we have the appropriate collateral in advance. But there are some summaries that he prepares that I don't think are necessary. If we have the right expectations set and other people do that for us.
Greg, what do you? You.
It's not that you wouldn't have to do anything, but I think.
No, I'm sure to put on your, reflections.
And that's always welcome. I think you go beyond that.
No, it's true.
And but in, in some cases, less is not more. You know, I mean, I, 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 I'm finding that balance.
Yeah.
I guess what I wanted also is, can we say the minutes will not go longer than three hours, as you suggested here, simply because we do, you don't function well after that, after a certain time and after so much time.
I'm trying to say the absolute.
Really, there are. Really, there are.
The goal in town.
Goal, right.
Right, it's, it's very hard to do that, I understand. What I'm saying is, can we say, okay, obviously this is going to take more time and some things are time critical, yes. But can we just say we're going to continue this at another meeting?
I think we need to meet more often. I've said that before.
Yeah, it has gotten a lot more work.
One thing we might consider is meeting on the first, third and fifth Mondays. That'll give us four more meetings a year. Another is to set a regular Thursday, perhaps on the ones that don't have five Mondays, where we talk about policies and other things that aren't urgent or.
I like the, we're going to get the topic.
Topic specific.
Specific meetings.
Yes.
We get a lot of those, those can go pretty.
Tree two hours.
Trees.
I'm, I'm going to be fascinated to find how to kill that time. He's eating my tree, this is very fun.
Oh, no, it isn't.
No.
Or maybe, maybe Greg, that's who you think she's fascinated.
No, the extra, extra meeting is just for specific topics.
Yeah.
I think that's. I, I think we ought to do a regular first, third and fifth. And just make those regular meetings.
I think so too, that you could do that. Now, of course, the fifth, then the following month's first is.
Yeah.
Executive Mondays.
But I think.
Well, and the beauty of having the extension of the hybrid is that as long as we have quorum here, we can, you know, two people can zoom in.
Yep.
And that's, I think, whomever, as long as whomever is caring of the meeting is physically here. And that, that can be anybody. It could be me, you, neither of us are here, anybody else, so.
I, I don't have any objection to meeting more frequently. It's not the meeting because of specifically its fine purpose. And I think because we're a new board and we're, we have some very big topics to go through, I think it is necessary. I would hope we would get into a case where, and the thing you got to be careful of is, is because you have the time, take three months instead of saying, you know, that third meeting will be, that will need to be an hour. Because these are things that are on the agenda and the rest of it doesn't need to be. So I just think we have to be stronger about saying, no, this doesn't belong here.
I agree, however, this, this role, the role of the select board has morphed in ways since COVID began and the types of things coming at the town. And I think that's only going to get worse at this point. I mean, we, we have things such as, you know, the, the effects of climate change that we have got to get on top of.
So once again.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that that comes under what Greg, you know, current affairs, state affairs and what we have to. But I, I, I agree with him. I think that we're trying to do too much and.
Let me, let me ask Greg a question. Greg, that puts a little more bonus on your bag.
Yeah.
Because that's another meeting that you've got to put together a memorandum for. And it's, it'd be just like any of the other meetings, you know, we've got miscellaneous topics. Is that going to be, or is that something you can experiment and see how it works out? And then you're going to have consecutive Mondays?
Greg's got them anyway because he's on so many meetings.
Well, I, well, yeah, but you're, you know, the preparation is very big for these.
So I really like the idea of a Thursday topical, actually that's my thing.
I think that's common, yeah.
If it's something that we have, know we have a potential for, there's a meeting, we've got the time locked up for all of us. And if something comes up, then we say, okay, this is what we use that for. But if it's not been topical, then there's no.
And we don't have the meeting.
And, and the other reason I like that is because if it's on a particular topic, maybe Greg doesn't have to do the prep. Maybe it's on a topic that, you know, Chuck or somebody else will do the prep, right?
We can move an item, okay, from a Monday night to, you know, something, this is, this deserves an entire hour of meeting to itself. Let's move that for this coming Thursday.
Kind of like the 60 minutes instead of the 90 minutes.
Yeah, yes, it is. I mean, it's a set outcome. That's a, that's a perfect example of meeting a Thursday.
Well, and this is where, for example, this upcoming pack, you know, the, the upcoming meeting, which why is that not there?
Yeah.
The one we have coming up on, on Monday and, and that.
So we shouldn't do it to try to solve the problem, set a technical deadline. It's just truly.
Maybe, maybe keep Monday instead of.
Well, but, but, and we, we tried that, but we couldn't find time to do the tree policy. So, I mean, not the policy, the trees. So now we're going to do it in September.
So, so we've done a couple of, a couple of these Thursday things. Just the idea to, all right, the select board meets the first and third Mondays of every month and the third Thursday of every month for topic-specific issues. So it's a standing meeting that maybe it can, if we got no specific things, rather than having to sit around all the time. Well, we've got to find a date, when's everybody available? It's automatically no. It's the third Thursday and I expect that a few of them would get, would get eliminated because we just don't have something for that month.
Can I suggest?
Maybe if you want to do the fifth Monday, I don't think about that.
Um, see, it's three more meetings and, and generally when the meeting is running along, it's not because it's boring and we're wasting our time on activity, it's because.
It's a difficult topic.
It's a difficult time and, and, and I would like to have the possibility to do it on the third. On the first, we roll stuff over to the third and on the third, rather than rolling it over to the next Monday, to the next first, we have a meeting with the stuff that we haven't finished for that month.
So let's just take a straw call here about the fifth Monday of the month and see what other board members think. I mean, I think we all agree that a third Monday, Thursday, the third Thursday or whatever, we do that. So what about the fifth Monday? John?
Um, I, I'd like to experiment with just the third Thursday right now and see how that goes.
And we know you on that.
Restake or are I going to be suppressed?
No suppression, honey.
I think we should hold out the possibility that on fifth Monday we meet if we have not dealt with, if we are rolling materials forward. In my first year on the board, almost every meeting you said, oh, we don't have time for that. It's, it's late, we can't take that up. Let's move it to the next meeting. The next meeting was equally cold and we rolled stuff over. If we find ourselves rolling stuff over, I would like to consider a fifth Monday.
So maybe we position this pencil in for now, but I, I, I do believe that if we are perhaps a little more strict in the past and in our preparation to what goes on the agenda.
Absolutely.
And I think to John's earlier point, we, we're doing much better on time management because of the types of issues we're discussing. We may not be.
So, so.
But maybe canceling instead of.
There is no, at this point, um, okay, we've got a fifth, um, upcoming, let's schedule some stuff. You know, as far as put down on agenda, it doesn't exist unless it's a rollover.
We shouldn't look for, we shouldn't look for.
Look for a reason to put it.
Grace and to have it, if it's, if we need to have it, it's there. But we shouldn't look for things to put on it.
All right, so we, that's, that's.
Because there was five exceptions.
Yeah, okay.
And Thursday will be.
I just wanted to be, we're not necessarily needed.
Thursday will be a project specific.
But I, I did think that coming back to preparation and that's important. I know Debbie's getting up to speed on, on how things have run in the town. And there has been a lot of inconsistencies because we just didn't have a full-time person in that position. And so now we do. But what I'm getting at is that we weren't getting any information until Sunday or Monday to prep for Monday meeting. That's problematic. And so, and Debbie sent this out for, for Monday's meeting on Thursday, was it?
Yeah.
So, so that's great. That helps us prepare. And so for us to be prepared, I think we need to have our packets by, by Thursday.
Yeah.
And then, all right, so that's going to be a including the events.
I'll, I'll, I'll bear to the exception of my vision, you know, that you're going to try.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yep, so packets, that's.
One's a four month.
Like that's the, but Debbie sends us by Monday, you, but okay, and TA.
And if another group is on the agenda presenting and they don't get the appearance of it, it's.
Okay, not the agenda. Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, all right.
Um, not always, sometimes there are.
Well, and that's, we can have exceptions, right? It should not be the rule. Okay. Do we feel we have covered functionality? All right, moving on to state of affairs. Greg, you wanted, you did cover mostly what was there, right?
Well, I did draw a script. Yes, we had a lot of challenges, like we've said, a lot of good things.
Yeah.
The departments are doing and services that are being provided. Again, obviously we have challenges long-term financially, but we are in good financial shape at the moment. We have a healthy fund balance, we have excess levy capacity. You can increase tax avoidance program about asset fund override. Suggesting you want to do that, you have that ability. So that just points to a town that is strong.
Yeah.
Financial condition. All for the good. I think the services that are being provided are being well-received by the majority of people. I understand it's always approved and always will be. But overall, I think residents would, would say that the pleasure of the services they receive. So, I think some of our biggest challenges going forward in terms of operations that we have, from operational point of view, I think stacking and public safety. My employees and Carter are probably the biggest challenge on the personnel side and on those services that people expect versus what we're stacking allows us to do.
As in shortage. Yeah.
The, the current stat to the point where it's fine when everyone's healthy and able to work. We don't have any easy ability to fill in when you have an injury or some long-term illness or something like that. There's some, some decides to move on and we have a vacancy for a few months. That causes a little stress, the public safety in particular. So, so I think that's an area where we need to pay some attention. On the fiscal side, I think the school district is probably our biggest challenge forward financially. There's some real pressures there. They are likely to ask for a very large override for this, for this year for, 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 in the spring. And that'll, that'll be a big issue, debate, public six response to that. We'll have Manchester response to that. So I see that as a, as a large, I mean, challenge. And then the other fiscal challenges that we, we made to capital, we've done a very good job over the last half dozen years or so. Pretty much more money into capital, we made some really good progress. Has been a very large backlog of capital needs. I'm hearing much better with that. We've been able to do it on a cash basis, not incur any debt. Even though we've been able to catch up to a lot, to a large degree. There are projects on the horizon that'll certainly challenge that.
Yeah.
And I expect that we will have to incur new debt, both the unretired and the new.
Right.
So that, that helps, but we will not be able to avoid new debt.
And in terms of current, how, how heavily impacted are we by the interest rates that are?
So we're not because we, we haven't gone out, we don't plan to incur new debt.
I mean inflation, sorry.
Inflation wise, it's, it's, we're going to see it with energy, that's our biggest hit. Those are our biggest towers for particularly the two plants, one can, the solar plant. Those energy bills.
Yeah.
Will definitely cause stress.
What do they call it for energy? Are they gas?
It's mostly electricity.
And we can't, you know, just very quickly, why don't we have solar panels on town hall and some of these other?
Yeah, we, we tried, they just kind of pan out in terms of cost effectiveness.
Right, yeah, even with the newer, when was the last time we looked at that?
Yeah, maybe with all, I remember like it's been three or four years.
Yeah.
About three, four years ago, the power of oil was, was way out.
Right.
It's a positive.
Yes, yeah, I think.
Hopefully this is temporary.
And sometimes there are aggregation purchase buys that you don't need to install anything. You're just buying clean energy from a farm.
Yes, exactly.
You do get all of our electricity through a solar farm just north of here. And we're, we're paid less, but you can pay 50% of the loan market rent. But the market rate goes up.
Well, I've never been, have you looked at the field by a water plant for a solar farm? Where do you mean bio?
Um, bio street.
Yeah, water treatment plant, where Bionharks is close.
Oh, I don't know if you've looked at some of them?
It's a fairly large.
Oh, it's, it's pretty large, yeah, it's a private operator and I'm sure they sell to the grid. It's been there for some time.
No, there's the Hamilton put solar.
Yeah.
And their old land.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, my land's still, it's too steep and, and the cap is not appropriate to support on the panels.
So I.
A lot of the places are jumping on parking lots, they provide coverage from the snow and the sun and you get the solar well.
So is this something you want to dive into now or?
I think a strategy discussion around how we, what's our strategy for operational improvement? And, and that, to your point, and about what's in the master plan, that should be our focus. The, the, the part of, you know, strategies for operations, I think, is probably not the largest part of that document.
Well, this is where you get input from Chuck and me.
Exactly.
These are the people who could be.
Our point is, why don't we charge them with.
Doing this.
Doing, we don't have.
As you said.
They're on the other side.
That's right.
It's just that we want to explore this, come back with us in three months.
And I think just in general, from beginning of the current state of affairs, you know, I was looking through some of the documents we give to people at town hall, uh, during town meeting, et cetera, the finance committee report. There is mention in there of, you know, in first, was it facilities master plan? There is mention of, you know, things that seem to have been discussed previously, but we don't have them yet. So I think we need a, a, a asset management or facilities master plan. I think we're missing, you know, to your point earlier, the climate resilience strategy. That's a, that's going to be big for us, so we've got to start chilling on that. So to Brian's point, you know, what do we think we need? And then let's start farming out the work and, and let the experts come back to us and say, hey, this is what we think we need. But I, I think it's up to us to have a little bit of a side discussion here on the operations of the town and, and what do we think we need from a strategy standpoint, your point, right? Cast those employees, because they're the ones with, they're going to have a lot of good ideas, yeah, we don't need.
So, so let's, let's do some of. So, so let's, let's do some of that right now.
Um, did you want to go through the discussion on the current state of affairs or you want to?
Um, yeah, no, no, that's, that's, okay.
So, because Greg was mentioning the fiscal state of affairs, I, I agree that the town is in good financial shape, I. I. Don't believe. There is strong alignment though on. Financial philosophy. I, you know, and so from the perspective, so I, I, you know, been meeting with the town employees just to get to know folks and ask them, you know, how do you go about the budget process, you know, educating me?
Boy, they must love you.
Oh.
Seriously, because coming in and asking and, and, and spreading the truth at Town Hall, right?
So. What I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that when, after this meeting, you know, priorities are. Determined and then there's an assumed peanut butter spread of everybody gets two and a half percent to. Man, that's their starting point from, for preparing their budget for the next year. There are other approaches besides peanut butter spreading the two and a half percent.
Yeah.
And so, because sometimes you might need to spend a little more in one area and pull back on spending in another area so you can. Maintain your budget, and so that's what I mean about a philosophy standpoint, because we talk a lot about helping Manchester be a little bit more affordable families. Part of that is managing the tax rate. Um, it's not just about the price of housing, it's once you're here, you don't want to get pushed out. Because you're constantly, you know, overriding the tax rate, so I just, I, I think it would be worthwhile for the board, maybe with the Finance Committee, before we start that process. To have a discussion about. You know, is it time to do some, try something a little different?
Or FinCom is pretty remarkable, and they do, they are great and, and they. They don't necessarily. Peanut butter spread the two and a half percent.
Right.
And, you know.
They don't, but when the message gets delivered, so departments do. So that's, if, because they're preparing what goes to FinCom, right? So if the messaging was different.
Yeah.
Then we're better preparing FinCom to do their work.
Yep, and you wanted to say something.
I was going to point out that we have a very low tax.
Our tax rate is very low relative to surrounding communities, but our property values are higher, so that's, that's.
So it's more a problem of property value is driving people out than taxes.
I'm, I'm just saying that.
So what can we do to reduce property values?
I understand, housing's an issue, I guess, I guess, I'm a, I think a.
Oh, she's the Asian.
I understand, and I, I just feel that philosophy, having a, we're a new board.
Yeah.
And having a philosophical, philosophical discussion about how you approach budget would be a worthwhile discussion to have with FinCom. That's, that's what we're looking for, because there are different ways to, to approach that.
I think if you're trying to affect the way the individual departments do their budgeting, maybe we need to talk to FinCom, but we need. To know what, what we expect. Before we. And, and that has to happen in September at the later.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And I guess the, the reason I'm going down that route, that, that route is because it is related to service levels, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Greg mentioned services and that residents are happy with services, okay, well, if you give one service level to everybody and you have one price for that service level. That is one approach, another approach is to have more personalized service, delivered at a higher cost and let everybody else get a break, you know? So there's different service levels, and that could affect how you do your budgeting, so.
Can you get a little further into how we provide disparate services to the best people?
Um, you know, it could be, for example, you know, the beach, the park, you know, that's, I don't want to get into a discussion about that, about details right now. I'll take the action, come up with a specific example on an example of a town-based service, service that could be adjusted to different levels.
So, so more of a fee for service?
Fee for service, you know, exactly, there's different approaches to, to.
The water resource, the task force is kind of looking at that through rates.
That's right, the, the.
That is exactly that, and right now the differential frankly makes a difference, the spread is like twenty-five, thirty percent from lowest to highest.
That's right.
There, there's no US.
Right, I sent, after the last meeting, I sent Chuck Nick. An example of how Irvine, California does their water, like, you know, they do, if you're real good at conserving, you get really no, right?
Right.
You know, be a hog, a water bug, you know, you.
Well, we got the.
So anyway, it's just an example.
We've got something put together, we think.
But hopefully that answers the question, that answers the question about what I meant, our different service levels.
But, but again, okay, now this is where when we're looking at the broad picture and implementing, I had those questions as well. And actually Eli did a super deep dive and, and I, I have it into.
What, the water, water situation, I've got it, I read it yesterday.
Yes, and everybody's got that?
I've, I've got all.
But, but what I'm getting at is one of his points was. You're relying on income. And we, and, and if we price out, now, and this is where it's, it's the. The truly ambivalent love-hate of, of, you, you, it is such a precious commodity, our water. And no, you don't, we should not be abusing what we have as a finite resource, however, we need their money. You know, so what, how do you, and this is to your point of, of how do we, with our financial philosophy, how would you use? And, and allot services. In that disparate manner without kneecapping our income.
It's not going to affect it dramatically, but we, until you find out where, where, where it becomes elastic, the demand becomes elastic, and we don't know whether it is.
Actually.
We don't know if it's ten times as much, fifty times as much, but there will be a proposal that will come to us within the next few months that will say. This is what we're going to propose, and yeah, the good news is, we hope that we'll reduce water, water use. The bad news is that they reduce that revenues.
Ultimately, it's about, you know, there's a, there's a tie between delivering services, behavioral changes, you may want to incentivize. And, and how you pay for those services, right? That's really how I'm saying, and I just, it's not real clear, when you just look at, you know, the financial documents we get at Town Meeting, that. That we're really, we have a strategy around that.
And the enterprise funds for water are, I think, around two million dollars, I think, one and a half or two million, so that's a lot of money in an operational budget of, I don't know, excluding the school, twenty million dollars.
Well, and also in terms of some. Buildings that are being, have one meter.
Well, we figured out, we figured out how we're going to get around that.
Good, and so you all run that, have you talked to?
No, it's the, written up now, and who's Sue Taylor, who will be approaching her, I think she has the information. We need a little modeling to be done because we need to know differences in use, a big building that has one meter that uses a lot of water, but it's because people live there.
Right.
Every quarter, they use the same amount of water, we're not interested in that.
Yeah.
We want the people that do nothing and then in July.
Eleven thousand, yeah.
It goes nuts.
Yeah.
And so we can, we can, we have to be able to select that out, so.
All right, so, so getting, getting back to. The, the. Current state of affairs.
But just one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, I just want to, before we go on, I just want to. Do we have anything here that we are currently addressing? We talked about strategy, strategy discussion for operational improvement, financial philosophy. Do we want to go any further on those right now or figure something out with those right now before we go to your next point?
Or maybe we could schedule a time to talk, like a Thursday coming up.
Okay, I agree, I think that strategy discussions, people need to think about their positions, their concerns, et cetera, and, and then having a holistic discussion just on those topics would be worthwhile. I agree with that.
Okay, all right, so. We will come up with a Thursday meeting for that. For those. Do we want to move right now? For Thursday?
Maybe we have a tree.
Uh, not, no, that's, that got bumped to September.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Yeah, we had to bump that off.
Oh, Jimmy. Can we use the slot we have?
Well, we don't have one, that's why we didn't, we couldn't find one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had the eighteen, I'm sorry.
I don't think. Ann, are you here for that?
I was hoping very much that that would be trees and I'd be elsewhere.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, that's, and, and.
Like you're.
I still have.
I'm pretty sure I'm going to use that day too. I think I'm doing my. I think I'm doing my.
You're doing your, well, that's another topic, does it have to be in evening?
Oh, it has to come in.
I mean, so.
I know.
Okay.
You don't have to do trees at all, you can delegate that. I don't know if you want to.
I, I don't want to delegate that. But, but how does everybody else feel?
I'm unclear as to what we were, I thought we were discussing what. If we're not discussing policy, Greg did the policy.
I'll come back in about, about it, that's, okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, Greg.
I'm. So our leader may need to get a little philosophy promulgated, because I assure you, if I were not on a town, on this kind of board, I wouldn't know that the town had a tree policy.
Me either, I learned I have three. I have no idea.
Yeah, I could have had three or four.
Well, and that's where, that's where. The Welcome Committee, you know, what is.
No, we're not new people, this is, I've lived in this town for thirty-five years.
But I'm saying you start with the new people and we, you know, put it out there, but now I, I, do we.
I don't think, I don't think there's any way we'll get that message to everybody in town, the only way to get the message is to go to every commercial tree, pruning and service company. And make sure that they know that we have a philosophy.
Trouble was that one.
Yeah, if they want to do business with the town, they had better not get caught.
Yeah, that was.
Right, Greg, Greg, did you ever write a weekly article on trees? I think you did, didn't you?
Policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, on one of your weekly, seems to me that would be a typical, that would be a topic to address.
So maybe offline, we could work calendars, it sounds like the eighteen was not good.
Well, we'll, we'll, yeah, we can, we can do that. The, the, their. The Friends of Manchester Trees was going to do. A. Finding all the town trees, last time that was done was. Anyway, it was years ago that that was done and. But we do not have a list of town trees, and I think that that's.
I thought the resident said that it was on the cheat sheet, the map. There.
There's an olden. There's an olden.
Olden, it's an old.
So it just needs to be updated.
Yes, but who does that? That's the question, who we have, because.
So when you talk about the policy, it was, you know, the general concept was the level of, the general rule is the level of off of the edge of the.
Whether the tree is in private property or public property.
It's assumed to be in public property.
But there are trees on private.
But there are exceptions, so if there's a known stone wall that's been there for a hundred years, then you're assuming the stone wall is property. The tree behind the stone wall is ours.
The other issue is the heritage trees, which can be anywhere on any of its.
So heritage trees, that's easy, relatively easy to identify, doing it is comprehensive in the toy, every town true.
Yeah.
I don't think it's realistic.
The last heritage tree list was done in nineteen ninety-eight.
So, so we started there, we started up the.
So we, we are.
So I think.
Probably a.
Thirty-six years from now, we're just.
Yeah.
Who's chat type, who's type? If that's.
That's for Brett. So, so where do we go with this information? This is something that then we have to chase down all of the homeowners to whom. Who have trees that are in this category and just kind of let them know.
Well.
Do they have the streets?
Well, there are the short town trees.
I.
Towns, churches is a general.
Because I, I agree, most people, you know, they look at tree, it looks like it's on their property, they, they just do what they will.
Right.
Even that eleven-foot distance not look standing. And, and I, I don't know how you really get, you know, contact people, I agree, most people don't know, they just.
If you send it out in the. The, the, either tax bill or a water bill, things like that, of course, and again, some, yeah. That, that could work, sending out a tree policy, I mean, I know of two lots in town now that have been denuded. And there are two, one on Bennett Street and one on C Street. And. Where every single tree was just chopped down, now. Then we start getting into property rights, property owners' rights and.
Well, we should have got into that before we adopted this policy.
Yes, well, there we go, and, and.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't recognize the tree having a property, we interrogate them.
Right. Which I, you know, I, I, I think that. It's. Not for us to do, however, if we've got. If you have a four-hundred-year-old tree that someone wants to chop down. Do you say, okay, it's on your property?
We say it's heritage trees.
Heritage.
Assuming that it's a big four-hundred-year-old tree.
Yeah.
If it's a small four-hundred-year-old tree, tough.
Four-hundred-year-old on side.
Something like this is a, this is a.
Topic for me.
No, I think it's a topic and I think it's related to also the climate resiliency discussion, because if you think about. Why we share about the trees, it's probably because of, not just because they're pretty to look at, but it's probably some useful purpose that they have that we're trying to stay. So maybe talk about that other topic and give us an insight to. Make some good decisions.
Yeah. So that, that, yeah, the tree. Although I.
I'm guessing it's climate resilience, you're going to make something else.
I think climate resiliency is. Going to be several nights.
Yes.
That's a good, that's multiple years.
Multiple years, but we need to get that started.
Is there a hand like on iPhone thirteen?
Say again.
Is there a hand?
Oh, I see, well, you're right, it's looking.
No, that's expected, that's like cursor.
What do you mean?
Oh, good.
If you put your cursor on iPhone thirteen, it turns into a hand, I thought iPhone thirteen was. Oh, that's, that's great. So, yeah. We get back.
So we can agree we're going to end the conversation about trees and put that on for.
That's a.
End that conversation.
One Thursday then.
Yes.
On time.
Yes.
I did just have one more comment on the current state of affairs.
Yeah.
We're ready to move to that.
Yes, you want to one more, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to communicate a perception that I hear from my neighbors and residents I spoke to in the spring. For whatever reason, there's a perception that. We don't always take good care of our town assets, building, whether it's a building or fields. We, we do a good job with the capital investment, but. We, we do a good job with the capital investment, but for whatever reason, are we not building in the total cost of ownership and properly maintaining that, um, in a way that those funds stay where they're supposed to stay and we can maintain stuff so they don't deteriorate and then we have a big, you know, replacement project. I don't know if that's an accurate assessment or not, but it's a very strong perception, a lot of people.
I think that's, that's typical perception of any municipality.
It may be a perception, but it has changed significantly over the last ten years.
Exactly.
That we are now doing a much better job of maintaining.
Okay.
And the skateboard park is a special case because it's built on swamp. It raises dead buckles, it becomes dangerous, they put a new circus on it. And a new sport, and then it raises the buckles and it doesn't work anymore.
It's, it's been several iterations.
It, it was kind of.
Tennis court.
In the skate park.
Um.
Pickle ball.
It's a, it's a frank of nuisance, frankly.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking about that. It was more people talking about sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two things I heard, sidewalks and fields, I didn't hear about it.
And streets, but I will say to what Anna's saying, since Chuck and Nate.
Yeah.
They.
My boy.
They, and they have a, um, a, a repair, replace cycle of sidewalks and streets that's constantly being done.
What I think might be, because sometimes perception is not accurate, right? And I think this could be related to how we communicate or don't about what that schedule is, you know? Okay, you live on Pine Street, what's your schedule for sidewalk maintenance? If you set the expectation, it's not gonna get not good for years. Okay, at least I know.
Right.
Right, so that it, once again, I use the word perception deliberately because it may not be accurate, we know they do a great job, but. And it's, it's perception. Perception is their reality.
Yeah, that was the one. And, and that's, but that's, that's getting back to how we disseminate information. And, and, you know, we can, we can put it in the cricket, we can email it, we can snail mail it, we can put it on the.
Totally.
Website, but if people don't, the only really effective way is sending a letter.
Well, there, so, once again, I think there are probably some things we can learn from other towns.
Yeah.
I don't know how often our employees do that type of benchmarking. You know, for one town I know of, uh, like during the winter, they have on their website, uh, phase one, two, and three, uh, sidewalk plow. Okay, if your street is listed in phase one, you know you're gonna get done in twenty-four hours. If your street is listed in phase two, you know you're gonna get done in a couple of days. If your street is phase three, we'll get to you when we get to you, you know? But it sets an expectation and, and the town knows where to go look for it, you know? For example, um, so I, I do think our website is probably in need of a refreshing.
Well, and again, back to the, the, the project dashboard. And so looking at the P W, you know, what they, water treatment plants, data, scatter, spatter, upgrade. You know, anticipated completion in fall of twenty-two. However, it's, this is different from really what you're saying.
Yeah, there's a difference between projects and operational expectations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I, I'm happy to add that to the list if it would be helpful. See if I can pull some stuff off other accounts.
That'd be great, or if you wanna, if you've got the time to do that, Kathy, that would be fantastic. Um, so. And I, and I know that, for example, you know, people looking, this, this. I'm not sure this falls under this category, but it is perception of this, this false perception of collusion. Now, people, so Chuck was, I was talking with Chuck about, um, some things going on. And he, um, he has had people who have accused him and, and the town of colluding with S L B. For example, by putting the pipe up, up on School Street. Now, but when in fact, and if people would not jump to conclusions, I'm getting a little upset, but I'm gonna dive into that. Say again? It was scheduled a long time ago, but also what's being done is we're having, in terms of climate resiliency, we have to increase those pipes because when we redo the culvert and we're trying, doing that to mitigate flooding uphill, which, take a look at Kentucky right now. If we don't address this, we too will be having problems like that. So when we, when we replace the culvert or redo it, which has to be done, it's failing and it is causing flooding upstream. So we have to increase the various culverts up or drainage, up the line.
Is it gray water? This is, uh, stormwater you're talking about?
Uh, well, part, part, but the reason the lines are, that they're doing water lines and increasing them, which he also said at least eighty percent of all pipes in our town are over a hundred.
Oh, they're years.
So he's, they're, they're trying to replace that, but when this water work, when the culvert starts being done, they're gonna have to reroute some of the water supply, which is one of the reasons why some School Street water pipes are being in.
Right, so School Street is one of the major truck lines speeding.
Yes.
Most of town gets fed.
Yep.
From one, from School Street, one way or the other.
But again, people are, are saying there's collusion with developers.
It speaks to a broader issue.
Exactly.
Of distrust.
Yep, that's.
And, you know, again, it's, it's not a big one, but there is certainly a contingent of folks who have a high degree of distrust.
Yeah.
Of what's happening in town hall.
And how often do they come into town hall to ask questions?
Would you ask questions of one of your crooks?
Well, there you go, but, but before I joke somebody of crook, I would love to find out, are they? I mean, that's, that's, and how do you do that? But it's, it's. It's, I mean, how do we deal with that conspiracy sort of theorizing? That's a perception, we go back as perception, however. But that's not a reality.
I just don't think it's a majority of people.
Oh, it's not, but they're very.
Yeah, they are.
Oh, loud.
But I think the vast majority know when people, there are people that are speaking that way, that that's not really the case. Most people go about their busy lives and don't worry about all of that stuff.
However, that becomes an immense time and energy stock for the employees and volunteers at the town.
So one of the things that, um, um, Greg and I talked about, how, how you standard around. What is, what is a, a good expectation of, of how quickly you respond to somebody? You know, it's, it's about time management again, right? So my suggestion was, you know, if something's an emergency, I would expect someone to pick up phone. Call this town hall.
Yep.
If someone sends an email and it's not an emergency, I think it's perfectly within Greg and his team's purview to set an expectation, they, they will get a response within a week or a couple, you know? Set an expectation, I think part of the, uh, what I see in town hall is, you know, someone sends an email and makes it urgent when it doesn't really need to be that way.
And they expect a response immediately.
And then resetting that expectation.
Right.
And recalibrating.
So how do we get that information out and say, okay, just because you send an email at eight oh three in the morning does not mean you're going to get a response by eight oh five in the morning?
So, I mean, if, if we're, if we're tackling some broader communication issues, we could use, when we communicate about those, we could take that opportunity to say, you know, we're, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're gonna be, um, having more office hours. We're gonna be, we have a email, you know, we could choose to mention expectations in a broader communication about communication, uh, as one hand.
Well, I mean, there, there are two, there are two levels of response here. I, I don't know, when people send emails like that, are they looking to do something about their problem now?
That's exactly.
Or, or are they looking to say, this is going for the great abyss?
Why, but I.
Or did somebody read?
Yes, and I know that, I, I agree with that. What we talked about earlier is if it's a problem they're looking for help with now, we talked about forwarding that to the appropriate town employee, right? But the emails that I see are more residents sharing their perspective on certain issues. And it's those that I think don't need a five-minute response. Email is designed to distribute information, it's not a back and forth, so a different communication.
Can we, uh. I'm just trying to think of. How you have, um, if there could be an automated response, automatic automated response that says, um, something about, uh, please understand that or, or know that we will review emails, you may not get a response, you know, immediately. However, someone will respond to you within a day, two days.
I, I don't think people are gonna take that seriously. I think they really wanna know that somebody, even if it's just a one-liner, we're working off, we'll get back. Because you gotta send this email to several other people to get answers.
However, and this, this happened the other day. I had, while I was at Burke, starting at, from before eight o'clock in the morning until twelve-thirty, I personally received, it was over fifteen emails.
On the same topic?
On the same topic, with the same four people, four people. And Greg and Chuck got far more than that. And the people, the email I received at twelve-thirty was one saying, this is unacceptable. Nobody's gotten back to me, I've been treated appallingly. And, you know, it's, it's, that's unreasonable.
I agree.
That is unreasonable. And, and that's the type of situation where, okay, town hall's not responding. Select board is not responding. And these were issues that had to be looked at by other, other boards, Greg, um, or departments, not boards, the departments, and someone who was out of town on vacation and would be back the next day. But that was unacceptable, that that person would not be back.
Well, I mean, that's, that person's proof. Uh, uh, once again, I, I just believe everything starts with clear expectations. So even if there was something we put in the cricket or on the website, you know, if you're, we want you to communicate to the board. And if it's this type of email, you'll get this type of, you know, a response within this type of. Right, but I always just believe in setting expectation wherever possible. And then if someone is unhappy and unrealistic, you know, thank you for your feedback. We'll take it and, and you end the conversation.
Well, and that comes back to another email I got to that point. Um, and this is that, um. One person was talking, and this, this really came down to the building department. We have a part-time building inspector and do we, um, what are the town's expectations? Either the town government or, and the town's people. What are they expecting from a building inspector or building department? And, and so this particular situation occurred, um, because it was perceived that there were loose record, there was loose record. Um, are there specific understandings and guidelines that someone can look up, a towns person can look up regarding the building department?
Like how quickly they respond?
Um, it is, look at me, try my understanding of this question here.
So it's an unrealistic expectation, to think that every communication that we totally have with the community is, is gonna be recorded.
Right.
That is not reality, it will never be real. Um, in this situation, there was an expectation of immediate response.
Yes.
And there is not a need for immediate response if someone's life isn't in danger and et cetera. The sky wasn't falling, but in the eyes of those folks.
Right.
The sky was falling and something had to be done immediately. It's not, in this case, it wasn't true. There is always an ability to correct violations when it is. If, if it has been determined that a violation has occurred. But the expectation from certain individuals is immediate cease and desist.
Yeah.
And we don't operate that, we have to react to them.
Yes.
So violations may occur and we correct it after they have occurred.
Yeah, and that, and, and I was at fault for that also. I was.
The town council will repeatedly say, let it play out.
Yes.
If someone has made it, if someone is doing something wrong, there is always opportunity to intervene and correct it after the fact.
And so what the, the, the point that I was being given was that if we have clear. And I, you know, I, I thought we did, but policies and procedures, um. I lost where that was.
That, that, this gets back to the correspondence issue.
Yes.
And when.
We got to.
Yep.
And, yeah, we already spoke about that, we've gotta make that, like, clear. And to Greg's point, there is a difference between a response and an answer.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And response, fine, but you know, I'm not on email sometimes six, seven, eight hours straight. And I know this situation, I got an email and I, I, you know, I didn't see it until four o'clock in the afternoon, I sent it out at eight.
Yeah, I think it's important to set the expectation that email is not a way to get.
Immediate reaction.
Response, it's not the communication channel to use.
Well, and that's why I think we use that little, you have a message.
Yeah.
When you send an email to whomever, and, and I don't know if this is across the board, like Chuck's office or whatever, please know that it's, or, or if you want immediate action, pick up the phone. Or if you, or you, if you want to get an immediate response.
If this, if this is an urgent, yeah, this is an emergency, please call this number.
Right.
But I wouldn't.
Proceed emergency.
Yeah, I wouldn't use, yeah, I wouldn't say if you want, everybody wants immediate response. I would do that, if this is a true emergency, please, um, pick up the phone.
Yeah.
Because five thousand one one will, will contact the A P W if there's.
Well, there's a message, there's a message in the deck in this particular instance, which I'm, I'm familiar with. They said multiple, multiple emails. I know, I want some action.
It doesn't.
Yeah, one email.
Yeah.
Or maybe two, if it's really necessary, it's just one email and then I'm on the phone.
Yeah.
We go to the next level.
So I, I think it's educating.
So the, the question I asked then, how much of an emergency is it that you decided that your wall was the email and you aren't gonna use any other form of communication?
Right, and I just don't know that it's general, if, depending on people's work histories or whatever, they may not understand that email is not how you get an immediate response.
And what do you want?
So what I was about to say is, let me call the town hall on Friday or Saturday or Sunday, it's important. Do you want Greg's mobile number available so that people can harass him?
No, of course not. No, but that's, that's.
So telephone is a very limited communication channel here.
For emergencies.
Right, but this was during the week, this was on Wednesday, weekday, you know? I mean, this is not, this is not on Friday, although Paul was here yesterday, right? He was supposed to be back. Okay, we, we'll, we'll go there, but that's another topic.
Well, it's in the correspondence part.
But I think if any point was here though, um, John, which I don't wanna lose, um, people do want to at least understand that their emails were read.
Yes.
And so, like, when I was sending emails to you folks on dispatch, you know, trying to get. I never received a single response and I didn't know if anybody read them and I would have appreciated. And I would have appreciated, hey, got this, thanks very much, boom, that's it.
And that's why I tried to send that.
Trying to say.
Thank you. And then, you know, it's, it's, so it's, I tried to.
I got it, I read it, you know? Yeah, otherwise I was thinking you guys had three hundred emails today and none of you have seen it, so.
And even, even that assumption is a little fucked up, I got it, period.
Yeah.
I get fifty emails, frankly, I haven't read all of them and I haven't read yours, I'm not going to tell you that.
I have four thousand.
But I will tell you, I've got it.
Yeah.
And so I think that, that, that is very appropriate response, but don't go beyond the fact that it didn't go into a black hole.
Right.
It's here on somebody's desk, mine.
Yeah.
And they go on others.
However, and this is where, I mean, I was trying to respond to this flurry of emails while I'm at my, my paid job. And, um, and this is where Greg couldn't do his job, Chuck couldn't do his job. And, and Chuck was simply trying to help out, it was not under his purview. Um, or his purview, but it was, um, there was not even time to send out that response before you were getting.
Another.
Another. So, so what would have happened, maybe you guys did this, but what would have happened if someone had responded, thank you for bringing this to our attention, uh, we will get back to you tomorrow. Or.
Well, right now.
When?
Or, you know, so and so was on, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you tomorrow, just.
I did not, I didn't say that.
And so they kept sending emails. Was it necessary to respond to everything after that? I don't know, I'm not familiar with these situations.
They kept adding on, both this and that, and it went from ten trees, twenty trees, to fifty to a hundred trees, I've been making that, it's just.
It's about feeding your response, you know?
Yes, and managing, right, and that's, and that's a good point. But, but I don't, I'm just trying to bring under the correspondence response category, these kind of situations that, that Greg is dealing with more and more. So, and Chuck couldn't do his job and Greg couldn't do his job because of, you know, this, this four and a half hour, and of course, there were many, many more. Many more emails after that.
I get it. However, I do think this is basic professional life management. There's urgent and there's support.
Yes.
There's what's urgent and then there's what is important. And as long as someone has communicated that once, based on this information, blah, 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 we'll get back to you tomorrow. That's it.
And that.
And any more further, and that's just providing air cover for the town employees, that it's okay to do that. If you have set the expectation, if all these other emails that came in didn't offer any new information that changed the, the sense of urgency, you don't have to answer them until tomorrow. You said you'd get back tomorrow and you get back to you tomorrow.
Right.
And do what you said you're going to do.
And that.
Other than that, I don't know that we need a policy so much as setting expectations and training for the town hall employees and providing air cover. It's okay for you to manage your time effectively for the town. I'm okay with you doing that.
So Greg, that, um, I know there was that sense, but, but doing that kind of a.
Well, I, I, I think it is to build a machine of trust.
Yeah, yeah.
And how, how can we cultivate stronger trust? Maybe it's, we're not going to meet everybody. I, I think there is some of a slight majority out there that does feel pretty comfortable with what happened. But nonetheless, are there things that we can do to foster greater trust? And that sense of we're, we're working for you, not against you.
And that comes under the part three priorities, right? Isn't that more under?
Well, let me, let me.
Well, so I'm trying to adapt to, if we create a coherent state of care, if it is a bigger issue that deserves attention, then make it clear.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get a sense of how big of a problem it is.
The thing that's happened in the, since you've been here, that I think is common, or is anything else to foster a sense of trust is common, which you deal with in the period. No other town administrator or town board or selectman has done that. And you do, I think you do a good job of exploring controversial issues and trying to explain, um, the direction to the town boards are taking. Um, and I really appreciate the effort that you put into that. I wish we could, we could reach a broader, it's hard to say this. There are people in town who don't subscribe to the cricket and there are many people who subscribe and don't regret it. But if, if we could find a way to get that for a broader audience, I think that would help.
Well, we did send out that, the, um, selectmen, select board updates that get sent out and municipal tax, yeah, or the week. Tax bills or the water bill?
The news.
The newsletter, yeah.
What happened?
Yeah.
So, so, but, but they're not getting the, the, the weekly letters that, that the rest see, the, the, what you put in the cricket?
The cricket, but there's also the, what the Board of Selectmen Corner or whatever it is. So two places they get municipal.
Well, there's, it's usually the town, that's all.
Yes, that's correct, that's a, that's a, I mean, this is all communication.
And that's got, it's only about two thousand followers, is that correct? On, on the tide, which is really pretty good. I mean, we think of what our population, five thousand, is.
Twenty-five hundred households.
Yeah, so twenty-five hundred households, you're covering.
You are, and the people that have the mistrust, I think they're subscribing to all of this.
I agree, I agree.
I, I, I just think they don't believe it. And I don't know what you're going to do to change their mind. Because if they're that interested, that they're going to voice that, let me tell you, there are a lot of pieces of communication that.
Brian, what is your take on this? Because I think you probably have an insight into that.
I hear a lot, I know it's like, uh, and it's not that I subscribe to it myself. Okay, my reason I'm probably here is because I'm a lot of others myself.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, the, I just think that there is a disconnect and that fosters mistrust.
But where, and, and to John's point, that he.
I think we're going to get out there and, uh, and communicate and walk the streets, go to the, by the way, we have a spot for you, that's what I was saying. Uh, and continue to not hide behind what appears to be walls, okay?
So, so that's interesting though, but before you go on, that perception that we are hiding behind walls? How do you, I mean, we are out there, but how, so how, that's, it's, it's.
There's also a feeling that a lot of these are lying in the debt.
Such as?
Well, one of the reasons I'm here was, uh, is the last year on the, and I don't want to get into a debate here.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
The script, not the drawing, okay? Is the outdoor diner, okay, uh, that whole hearing, okay? And, uh, and it seemed like the decision had already been made and it would just go into the efforts to appease the people by having this, uh, this here, okay? The, again, the top of the dispatch, okay? Uh, these are, these are things that the common folk, okay? Uh, are concerned with. And the, I don't think that, that people are feeling that they're, they're being heard.
Yeah, I agree that, I think it's also, in addition to what you're saying though, there is just so much change hitting the town from so many different directions that people are connecting dots that shouldn't be connected.
And the other thing too, it's a national crisis, okay, that's tripling all the way down.
I agree, but, but I would also say.
So really mistrust is sat at the top and we're just popping off.
And, and the, the connecting of the dots will hopefully go. Um, what I feel is that there are residents who feel this change coming from all these different places is going to change Manchester in its negative way and we will lose our small town community that we love. And I think that's at the crux of the problem there, they're feeling that awful.
Yeah.
And it just happens when we don't think about change holistically. We're, we just go project one, project two, decision three, and we look at each thing individually instead of a cumulative effect.
Obviously, there's an evolution, next year is, it's just.
Attack. They feel like.
I was trying to say, you have to think this, and again, that's consistent with public, every small, as small as on America. Okay, where you see all the memes of, you didn't like where you live, you liked what you did this town, you moved here because you liked the community, now you're trying to change back where you have in the old town, okay? It's not, it's, it's not an isolated incident here in Manchester.
I agree, I agree.
But that's what we focus on.
So again, it's the perception of reality. And we're going to fight, you know, I've been defining that for sixty years.
I think we can only fight the perception with facts. I don't know how else to, I do feel that some of the things we talked about earlier are going to be helpful because I do feel that the social media is a very big channel of communication and we are not consistently engaging in a way that might be helpful. I, I, and I don't have an answer here, I'm just saying that it's, there are these multiple channels, they serve a different purpose and sometimes it's to inflame, you know, a wound. But we've got to figure out how we're going to engage in each channel and to what extent we can't ignore.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, and that, that, you know, comes.
Okay, then one final aspect of this, okay? Uh, again, fortunately, it's all behind us now, okay? There is a perception of government and we, we want to have a realm now asking the decisions for, uh, for us. Okay, the mask mandates that we imposed became a radicalized initiative, okay? Um, results.
Well, that was part of our.
Yeah, okay, but.
Part of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. But.
Public sector is.
It's all government.
Right, and I'm smart enough, I can wear masks if I choose to and I don't need to be told to have a rubber mask when any other smart town, uh, didn't have this mandate. So that's, those are the three hot buttons that I saw from the last year, okay? And, but we also know there's going to be hot ones coming up again. Once, uh, the forty B is closed, the public hearing is closed, okay? What's going to be the perception, I'm sure it's going to be what's going on behind closed doors. I know what, as a board, what we think is in the best interest of the town, but the town people aren't going to see that as well, okay? And, uh, I'm getting the, the select board now giving these emails and notes. We get them constantly, I mean, right, uh, so Wednesday was the last day for public comment. My inbox was packed with, uh, Greg and Paul's arms as well, with all, you know, opposition to the S L B. So that's going to be the next hot button, something that's going to, it's going to affect this board, it's going to affect this town. No matter what, no matter what we do.
Exactly. And that again goes back to perception versus reality. So much of that on the S L B that I'm just saying is, is what people perceive to be within our power, which is not.
Yeah, that does make me think of something. Uh, so, um, we were talking about roles and responsible, roles and responsibilities for the committees clarifying all that stuff.
Yeah.
Um, there was something that, um, one of our residents, when they were giving us feedback, I forget which resident it was, on this meeting today, suggested we document the roles and responsibilities for the board using a RACI chart. It's a Six Sigma tool, responsible, responsible, accountable, consulted and informed. And it's a very simple matrix, right? Really good tool. And it's usually used for projects, but I think we could adapt it to help outline like decisions or deliverables and which board is the decision maker, which board is, must be consulted and where do the residents, where are they the decision makers, like for the budget set? So we could put together like a simple RACI chart, which might be helpful to people who never lived in a town before.
Yeah.
And they moved to a town and they don't know how it operates, or maybe our bylaws are a little different.
That's a great idea.
So that resident can have a good, was, but they had a really good idea. It's still simple, why didn't they?
So we are now eleven thirty, we have half an hour left. Um, I do, um, I'm just going through this to see what comments, other comments might need to be acknowledged for today's meeting. I know, where are they? Um, or is that, and so, you know, some of the priorities that were sent in uh, by one person and then forwarded by another and then obligated by another, you know, some of these are just not legal. But the last one was restored trust and transparency. Now, I say it from, you know, being plum naked, there's not a lot more transparency, nobody's hiding things up sleep. But how do we, can we, um, reach this not, not majority group who deeply mistrust? What do you?
I, I, I think, I mean, this effort with the, the festival, I will schedule something, you have to just keep on doing those tasks. To be honest, I don't think you ever have to convince those people. That's just their mindset. But you can't fall into a trap of, of, of really, um, you know, starting to get involved in social media and a lot of these other things where so many of these suspicious comments come out and I'm not on social media and I don't know if anybody, you are.
I am, I don't, I don't, I'm not on it a lot.
That's right, you're, you're sneaky about it.
Oh, I'm not, I just, I go on.
Just wants to lie to everyone.
Dump that time, go on to Facebook.
I understand, I understand. But I, I just think that we have to come up with ideas about how to communicate and follow the state and straight, steady, um, straight and steady path of trying to, um, get our points home to various routes. And whatever these people are going to believe, they're going to believe. I just think that you can't convince all the people all of the time, no matter what you do.
One of the things I've been doing is, um, meeting personally with a number of people who have, um, expressed certain concerns. And I have personally been meeting with these people. Not, not trying to come, just simply get what, what their concerns are. And, uh, many evenings and afternoons I've spent doing this.
Have you on personal desk with the laughing doll?
Well, the laughing doll, you know, I go to the, anyway, just, again, being out at different local establishments to do that. And I, I'm not, I'm not, other than being a member of the select board, I'm not saying anything. Just really listening. And I think that, that it's along the lines of what we were talking about, meeting brief, being visible. And that's how I think we're going to, to be able to actually.
We have to take advantage of what the town, we have constant activity too today. I, I try to get there every, every, okay? Now I have an excuse, I used to be a little concerned about being this, you know, that one. Looking, looking on the latest
Looking for love in all, right?
But, you know, last Saturday, the Masons were set up on the Lock Street, walked through there, okay, walked through the justice.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got coming up, you know, just any event that you see that's out there, take advantage of it.
Yeah, which, which
I'm sure we all do, I mean, I just, I do it, I just
Yeah.
Try to my steps.
Yeah. But I think that it's it's critical for us to be when I ask how do we address this? That's how I think we address that.
Be persistent.
Most, I think the the biggest concern is, as we have all stated, it's about being heard. That simple response to an email few situations don't fall under that category, but you know, it's, we are in a small town, and that's one of the beauties of the small town, is that we can get that personal touch.
I've always said about this town is you have, you live in a glass ball, fishbowl, this town. If you choose to, okay, you never see, okay, but I remember telling my son years and years ago, Ben, there's nothing you can do in this town I'm not gonna care about.
We have rec chat, we did, yes.
Conversely, I said, conversely, without what I'm gonna do in this town, you're not gonna care about.
I have said the exact same thing with my kids a little.
You know, I get these phone calls from Tim Bo years ago, I saw your son riding his bike in Brother Helmuth. Wow.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. It's, but but and I I have lived in other small towns, and I've lived in large cities, and probably most of us have, you know, those experiences. And I I, small towns change names, but they don't change him.
I was told, okay, people know who's kind is a long
Yes, all right, so who's gonna do, who's gonna work on the RACI chart? Kathy's got another one, woo woo, I already prepared my Okay. So we have twenty five minutes, we're stopping at noon. I would like, before we move off, number two. Good staff striving to deliver good service, absolutely. Do we need to somehow? I think that falls under what you said in terms of people
I think we need to bring a staff to you more often.
For us to the staff?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's it's, I'd love that you've been going in and meeting with different staff. And I've gone in a few times to some and just said, thank you very much, you know, we I can speak to the board and say, you know, we're appreciative of what you do. That's, that's an okay thing to say. But I do, I agree, we need to be known, better known to the staff, without stepping on Greg's toes who oversees those staff, that's just, we're here if they want to reach out. Which just means we come into town hall a little bit more. But I think if we're all touching base with Greg periodically, each time we come in to touch, and it's really important that each of us individually keeps up to date with Greg. Maybe go just pick an apartment or two or pop into and go and say, how's it going today? What do you think? Does that, does that sound?
Yeah, I mean, I already do that, I'm probably here at least once a week.
Yeah.
Sometimes I hit Greg, sometimes I don't. It's just kind of a crap shoot, but that's okay, because DPW, Parks and Rec, I kind of make the rounds. And whoever's in, you chat about the issues of the moment, and of course, we have issues of the moment in all of these departments. So it's it's a good idea, everybody should be in here at least once a week, I don't know that we necessarily need to have structured talks with Greg. But he's in here probably two, two times out of three I walk in, he's there.
Yeah.
And if he's not, then he is, and he's a good proxy.
Yeah, Debbie and Sue, but so that's good to hear that people are coming into, that we are coming into town and doing talk and doing this.
You really have to dig your blind area.
Yeah.
And she's great.
She is great. We're very lucky, I mean, we
So we're very lucky, we have been all We are, and honestly, that's one of the
Right answer, somebody is doing some pretty good hiring.
Yes, absolutely, no, that was one of the, the lessons learned for me is, because I really wasn't familiar with any of the town authorities other than Greg before I came here, and they're just awesome, we're so lucky.
Me, and and as Anne said, yes, they come to good hire.
Yep.
Thank you, Greg. So twenty minutes left, and we've still not, we haven't really gotten to priorities. Which I think merits more than twenty minutes, but question is, do we want to have another workshop that focuses on this last topic? But give it an hour? Something like that? No?
No, I think that's a good, to try and jump on that now, because this might be this takes more than twenty minutes.
Could we do a Thursday evening, or a Monday, a fifth Monday evening on that?
I think it's important to have that spread and discussion. If, I mean, you kind of want to make sure you talk some high level stuff
Absolutely.
Before you put your priorities in, you know, chisel up a stone. So I think that a separate meeting would be great.
Okay, and maybe we could do it on a fifth Monday. Well, I'm thinking if instead of a instead of a Saturday morning, which I am love. But, we all love those. So where are we, I I don't want this to, this can to go down the road. I think we need to keep going with this. When do you leave again, Anne? In a half an hour, half an hour. And when do we get you back? Tomorrow? Hell, well, I don't know.
We've got a lot of, we've got like six come and go deals here.
Yes, we've got our
The problem is that they don't rent cars one way, so we have to take the car back, drive them, and then back, hold, and then back. And then on the third, we leave again, we'll be here for the eighth, and leaving on the ninth. I'll be remote on the fifteenth.
And we can't, the eighteenth is planning.
That was a weird thing, you're going on the eighteenth.
That's my plan.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
And
And what about the twenty fifth?
I think, let's do it, the twenty fifth says it's uh, yeah, no. He does not have a nine fifty PM appointment. I'll be here on the twenty, afternoon of the twenty fourth. I can probably stay to the twenty, uh, through the twenty fifth.
The twenty fourth?
Twenty fourth, the evening of the twenty fourth?
Greg, August twenty fourth, Wednesday night?
Uh, I'm, with good chance, uh
I don't know, it's on Arizona.
But didn't you book a bunch of, um Okay, I'm done. Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, we do have conflicts with other
Okay, oh, I can stay, I can stay the, until the twenty sixth, till the evening of the Anytime, anytime on the twenty fifth.
And Brian, what time do we get out of work?
I can, that can be your four, I mean, I'm just usually from three or four, I'm trying to look this year.
So do we want to try for a four o'clock, I mean, town hall's open anyway, right? So what about a four o'clock on the twenty fifth?
Okay. And then there's also, this month has five Mondays. All right?
I just, I just don't want this to keep
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not advocating that at all, I'm just pointing this out.
Yeah.
Uh, I will be, if I could, we decide to do that, I will be in an airport or in the air.
On that fifth Monday?
In turn, I'll probably come back from Utah next.
Okay, so, and this will be, we're continuing workshop, right? What, Anne?
Oh, I I thought, sorry. I thought we were using the fifth Monday for overflow from regular meetings, right?
Yeah.
Special projects.
Yeah. Special projects, it's two, Thursdays and Mondays.
Special projects on Thursdays, overflow on Monday.
Fifth Monday.
And until we've had the meeting on the fifteenth, we won't really know whether we have.
We need that fifth Monday. No, so so this being, this is kind of special.
Yeah.
So this is a, so Thursday at four o'clock.
Thursday is worse today.
The twenty fifth, and we will do here again like this, Greg, would that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I just want to back up, so the trees, we're gonna do on the eighteenth?
Yes. Oh, wait, no, September.
That's September, we
That back up one drop to September. Yeah.
Was, is there a date on the
Yeah.
Well, that'll be eighteen, unless
They weren't doing fifteen, thirteen, thirteen.
Well, so, wait a minute, what, what, what are you talking about, you're about, you're escaping into trees?
Last September.
Uh, into September, okay, now is everybody else here on the eighteenth except Anne?
Eighteenth of August.
August?
Yeah.
Do we want to do trees that night and Anne just doesn't have to attend?
That's how I would go.
She's gonna miss you, Anne.
I mean, should we go ahead and do that?
If we can.
All right, like and everybody's all right with that?
Yeah.
Anne's very
Okay.
And at some point, the
So that will be
August, August eighteenth is gonna be trees, right?
Yeah.
Is that six thirty?
Can't, that could be two weeks.
Is this, well, it just, it has to, we have to make sure that there's enough notice time on that one.
Oh, does that have a two weekly time?
It is a two
Yeah. Do we have, yes, we do have, yeah, that's two weeks easily.
So this is a treaty hearing and a reconsideration of treaties.
Just, yeah, very trees up for the bits.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what time is that on August eighteenth?
Six thirty?
Are there giant trees?
There's nine different trees.
And that does, and if we Well, and we typically get the trees, we'll get those in advance so that we can all go take
A walk or drive around town.
Yeah. Visiting trees.
My first tree here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so you've got the eighteenth for trees, twenty fifth at four, not six thirty, for doing this Yeah, okay. Um, let me modify that.
I'm just gonna look towards the cricket to check my schedule.
The first to know.
So I put trees in my phone at some point, I say, it's kind of up.
Okay, so, good, this is Okay, well, that, any, any further discussion on anything?
Just one question, scheduling for festival visits.
Yes.
So Michael wants to know, do we, do we want a tent or do we need a size? We can, this is what he said, we can accommodate, we'll find a hot location, I'm kidding, maybe a chamber, that's great. We have a tent, maybe some chairs, I can bring those, but I'll always add tables, so we can bring ten of our chairs.
I think a tent and chairs would be
Typically, fine chairs, we really don't need a table, I would take care of a sign
I'll bring a table.
That will be there, if I think it'll see any Is that right? Well, I think I would do that, because I I would like to create some sort of sign that we can use.
Yes.
Lots of fun, we'll see.
Well, and I know somebody who makes signs.
If you need help with that one, you know.
So and then we can, as long as we're not doing anything other than discussing time coverage, we can put email, do an email about that, about who wants to be where. I would love to have a tent and chairs, I will bring a card table or we can bring something simply in case for writing.
All right, just while we need the tent.
Tent and folding chairs.
Chairs, kind of folding chairs.
That would be super
That'd be awesome, yeah.
And so, we've got to be a little disciplined about this, because we can only have two of us there that account. Otherwise, it's core.
Absolutely.
But that shouldn't be a problem, it's
As long as you don't discuss if I have a party, I can invite all of you.
Right.
That's true.
This is pretty more of a party than it is a deliberation.
Exactly, however, I still think
It's kind of like, it's
Right. Well, and optics, I think, though, let's, let's just do two, it's, it's, any more might seem a little imposing.
Yeah, yeah.
And 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 less, less informal if we have more than two of us at a time. We can do one, some two. And starting at
To a different, like, I have two hours, so
I I I didn't think just, you might even be able to do one, because I don't think we need to be doing more than four hours.
No, I agree.
I I go ten to two.
I'll hold my hand.
Ten to two on that.
Yeah, I think that's it, so we'll do that ten to two, we love it. We can get that on the two, and so Mike is going to provide chairs and tents. Okay. And we can email around about that, Tiffany can get something on, we have something to sign?
We've got a few things to sign.
Okay.
Some of you have signed, some of
Now we have a motion on the table that's been seconded, we can do the signing, so, motion to adjourn, seconded. Any more discussion on anything? Okay, roll call vote, John Rattan?
Yes.
Brian's obviously, yes, and Harrison, she has a lot of special jakes, yes, okay, thank you.
Excellent.
And now it's
Great, thank you, good, yeah.
Thank you, there we go.
Have a great day.
Thanks, Derek, appreciate you.
I can't, so a lot of this, the whole time was pretty much going on process
Yeah, it was.
And functionality, just things up.
Yeah.
Who is, and can I, is this still, um
Are we, we are also recording, let's go ahead and turn